Uh, so I'll open the planning board meeting. Uh, this is the planning board meeting five thirteen twenty twenty five, uh, seven thirty four P M. Good evening. Uh, this is the meeting of the planning board. Uh, as a preliminary matter. This meeting is being recorded and the attendees are some of the attendees are participating by video conference. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Carol McDonald.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
Um, with a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty five P M Tuesday twenty twenty five. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor's Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to uh, state of emergency in the Commonwealth, Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location allows encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. Um, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking, speak clearly to accurately um, ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any responses, please wait till you yield to the floor to state your name before speaking. If board members want to talk to one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, do we have any housekeeping that needs to be done? And I take a motion for accepting the minutes from our last meeting?
Got moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a mere a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See, none. I'll ask you to vote to accept the minutes of our last meeting. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other mail or anything that we should be contemplating at this point?
Hmm, I delegated the mailbox to Tim.
I'm gonna check it Thursday.
Okay, so there's really nothing then?
I sent you some stuff, but I think, I don't know if it's this week. Something from Clinton.
Yeah. I I sent Thomas's last draft to Meredith and she got back and said she was pleased. And excited about the possibility of hearing who the interested parties are, cuz I they guess them Liz at the mall, that crowd opens up or finalizes the list of possible buyers um sometime in the next week or so.
Oh, wow.
So with Meredith feeling comfortable, I'll send that to town council and she can turn it around and then we can give it to the select board and they can sign it. And then that'll be a document that Liz can hand to potential buyers and say Berlin's ready to work with you, so that'll be good.
Yeah, hopefully they get somebody that's not a bottom feeder.
And she said so far there weren't any bottom feeders.
Oh, wow.
I talked to her a week ago.
Malls are in again, people are shopping.
Yeah, Liz said that Macy's is doing well enough, so they have not said to her they're closing this one.
I went shopping there last week. And the last time I went to one of those stores, there was no inventory. Salespeople said, oh, it's too much theft, so we're not keeping inventory here. I didn't believe that. And then this time I went and there was a ton of inventory and a lot of shoppers.
Huh, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, something's changing.
Well, you you can't buy things uh tariff free from Taimo anymore, so.
This week.
No, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said now.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean that quite literally, that, yes.
Uh, the other thing is I wrote to Katie Page, the FEMA, no, the state lady regarding floodplain to say we'd passed it. Jade, do you rem- it seems like she said there was something we needed to do with them once we passed it, so I asked her, did you remember? We supposed to verify somehow certify that we've done it or some?
I have to look at my notes. I don't remember anything about that.
Yeah, I wrote her and said, are we supposed to do something else? So, I did that. We'll see what happens. She's usually pretty pretty quick about responding, so if we need to do something else, we'll have time. And still no word from E E A.
For anybody, for anybody or just us?
Um, a number of towns have got notified that they were accepted, um, so.
That's crazy.
Yeah, Jane said it's they they've been trying to reach out to the state and get an answer, but they haven't been successful and and then of course Jane wants to know if we're still interested in going forward with the one stop application for the same work, you know, working on the rewrite and we said yes, so I said to her, yeah, we probably go ahead and do that, so.
And that one has a bigger match, that one has a bigger, there was something that was bigger.
More, there's more competition.
Yeah.
But.
Did they lose our application?
I said to Trish at Central Mass, maybe we didn't file and she said, no, I've got your application right here. It's it's complete, you sent it in. So I said, so, yeah, it's weird. Particularly the fact that they they can't get an answer.
Yeah, that seems weird.
Cuz they know most of the players. I'll chase Trish again tomorrow and say, hey, how come we don't know anything? I mean, you'd at least expect to get a a no.
Right.
Or something. Through it all that makes sense. The only other news I have is that we have plans for the subdivision behind the vet. But I reached out to Eloise earlier today and asked if she'd received the check for the sixteen fifty and she said she'll check again, but she doesn't believe she's received it, so.
No, I think we got that.
You got it?
Yeah, and I deposited it.
Where?
Uh, I'm pretty sure that's, yeah, sixteen, I it came in the ma- it was in the mailbox.
When? Last week?
Yeah, maybe a little earlier than last week.
So you, who'd you give it to, Eloise?
Uh, well, I'd never done this before cuz I was not properly trained.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
Right, again, again with the I haven't been trained.
Yeah.
I kinda wandered around and asked people what to do and I got a form from Dee, which she partially filled out for me and I filled out the rest. Then I had to go to the accounting department, which is where it used to be our file room, hidden away in the back corner, to get an account number, which was thirty eight digits, which I've now recorded for the future. Then I wrote that on there and went to the treasurer.
You did all this?
Yeah, with my form with all the account numbers and the check and I handed it over and said, all yours.
Look at you.
I'm going on LinkedIn and adding this skill into my database.
All you're supposed to do is give it to the town clerk.
Well, she's never there. She's there like two hours, you know, Thursday, every third Thursday at when the full moon.
You just stick it in an envelope and slide it into the door.
Oh, I didn't know that. Nobody told me that.
Okay, so we do have a check and so the the application.
Start sticking.
Yeah, so when did you, do you know when that was? Where's your receipt?
Well, it was, I was paying my taxes, I guess.
Two weeks ago.
Last month.
Oh, maybe, yeah, I was also going to see the assessors.
Do you pay at the last minute?
Uh, some of them, yeah. I get kind of a big stack, so.
So two weeks ago?
Let me.
What do we got?
I might have scanned it. I would, it's something.
Ninety days?
Thought it was a hundred and twenty. It's a it's a preliminary, right?
Yeah, it's preliminary a hundred and twenty?
I think it's a hundred and twenty.
Anyway, we'll have to reach out to them and Jay will have to reach out to them and schedule an appointment.
Did the plans get distributed?
I've got them here. I'll put them around now that.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, we we've got a check.
And this is a this is not A N R, right?
Preliminary.
Preliminary. We have a chart, which we haven't used.
Yeah, they they were trying to do their conservation filing piecemeal and not include this and D E P's came back and said, mm mm, we wanna see the whole thing.
So, a thousand dollars for the plan, a hundred dollars per lot and fifty dollars for the filing fee.
Is it on there, that screen somewhere?
The amount?
No, it the amount or the number of days?
Says forty five days, residential. Submit preliminary plan.
Yeah, forty five days.
Wait a minute.
That's too late.
Because preliminary plan, it it um shortens the timeframe for the second phase here. Because the preliminary plan is optional.
Right, so how many days is the original? I mean, the 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 preliminary?
Yep. We have a forty five day response in the preliminary and then ninety days for the definitive, if they have filed a preliminary first, otherwise.
We got forty five days.
For the preliminary, yeah.
And perhaps fifteen are up, so we got thirty days left.
Thirty days left, yeah.
So we don't twenty seventh, the tenth of June. Forty five days. So depending on when you got the check, we could have till the tenth of June.
I bet I have a receipt somewhere.
And I will, uh, when I go up Thursday, I'll stick the plans in everybody's box.
So the tenth of June is two more meetings.
Right.
We have May twenty seventh and then we have June tenth.
Right.
Are we gonna um engage a consultant?
It's helpful.
I know it is. Guy at Haley and Ward is retired.
Uh oh.
You know. Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I get their plans electronically. I get everybody else's.
Well, you don't have electronic plans yet either?
I sent you I have two two plans that I posted. One was, uh.
All right, let's um, we can, we can table this and deliberate a little bit later cuz we're running over our time now. We're gonna be off of West Street and Allen Road.
Okay.
Can you share the plan?
Yep.
Then there's a couple of people in the audience, whoever is whoever is presenting, Dan Wolf.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's Dan now.
I've been here for a while. I wasn't sure if you could see me, though.
See you now. How are you?
Happy New Year.
Thanks, Tim.
We haven't seen you in years, have we?
Um, Pollard Road was the last time I was in.
Years.
Built now.
Wow.
Built, sold and resold some of them.
Yeah, I saw one of them for sale again. It's only one point two million, I think. All right, let me know if you'd like me to start.
Yes, please.
The plan?
All right.
Yeah.
This plan um that's on the screen now is a plan for Mike Sawyer. Uh, it's on Allen Road. And um, Mike has been working on this off and on for a number of years now. He's changed his mind a few times and reoriented lots and we're finally set on this layout. Um, lot one is a large lot in the back, has frontage on West Street. Uh, it's fifteen point seven eight acres, has three hundred feet of frontage on West Street and has another hundred and seventy six on Allen Road. Um, lot two has two point eight six acres with in excess of three hundred feet of frontage and lot three is eleven point nine four, so they're all, um, certainly lot one and three are are healthy sized lots. The lot line between one and three um has been strategically placed cuz there's quite a drop off from the rear line of lot three down into lot one. So Mike wanted to make sure that the uh the hillside um where a lot of uh the ledge drop off there is solely on lot one, so we went out and located a lot of the features out there and came up with this lot line layout. So it's, it certainly has in excess of what it need for all three lots for frontage and area. Um, fairly straightforward A and R plan.
Mike and I went to visit this today. If uh we ever have a shortage of rock and need to break up some ledge, this is gonna be very valuable.
Did you go into the property, Jay?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty impressive that that rock face out there.
It's amazing.
It's very nice.
Property, though, I mean, that's great location for the house, kind of.
Yeah.
Not in anybody's view probably and uh he's not trying to crowd too many houses on it. I think he didn't want to, so.
Right, there was an earlier rendition of this A and R plan that had an additional two lots on it, so there's potential for more, but this is all Mike wants to do.
Yeah. And lot three.
I think it really is gonna make lot one and lot three certainly premier lots. It'd be real nice.
Yeah. But as it is, lot three has enough area and frontage for three houses, right?
Um, I believe it still does, yes.
Yeah, cuz you got.
That's not his intention.
Hundred feet and almost twelve acres, right?
And the pond is on lot one or lot three?
I'm not familiar with a pond at all.
I think, I think it's on one.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, there there's a a lot area out there, yes. Yeah, cuz lot three is significantly higher than lot one.
Yeah.
Any other questions I can answer?
So all three would end up being accessed by Allen, then?
That's right, yes.
That's great. Good.
Yeah, there's a stream crossing at the West Street.
West Street one, yeah. Good. Um, if if you scroll, Jay, so we can see the table, I'll try to make a motion. All right, I move that we accept a plan. It's just dated April twenty twenty five? Is there a specific?
The the stamped date down below is the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, April seventeenth, prepared for Michael Sawyer by David E. Ross Associates.
Second.
You're gonna reference the lot, the book and page?
Is there a book and page in the upper corner?
Well, a book and page of the overall deed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be note number seven. It was uh sold to Michael and a deed, recorded in book one, six, six, one, zero.
Okay, there we go.
Twenty nine.
Yep. Approval under the subdivision control are not required.
And Caroline, you seconded?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the plan from Michael Sawyer as an A and R. Uh, do we have any further discussion?
I just always appreciate Michael's effort to create lots that make sense.
Yep.
You know, I mean, if everybody did this, it'd be so much nicer.
Okay, seeing uh all the discussion and no other hands and no one's jumping up and down, I'll ask you to vote to accept this as an A and R. Caroline McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Great.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much and just let us know when you're all set with the signatures, we can come pick up the plan.
So do we have the um the form and the check?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Those were sent to Jay electronically and dropped off at the town hall a few weeks ago.
Did you deposit in your special account again, Jay?
Well, I only deposited one. What was the amount on that one?
Um. Honestly, I forget. I may have it here.
Should have been we got three lots, it should have been uh three fifty, right?
I was, three fifty is the number in my head, but I didn't wanna quote that if I was wrong, but that's what I'm remembering, yes.
I don't remember seeing that.
Well, you might not have, it might have went to the clerk.
Yeah.
Well, I I collected it personally from Michael and gave it to Kevin, who submitted everything at the town hall.
Okay, yeah, I don't think I saw that particular one.
We'll chase it down.
All right, very good. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
You know, you're still sharing, Jay?
Yeah, this is for the next topic.
Got it.
This is our next customer?
Yeah, and there's two different things. One is is home contracting business and the other one.
Well, the special parent site plan review was the first item that was on the agenda at eight, so let's take that up first.
Okay.
And that's Jerry?
Yes.
Get him on here. Maybe not.
All right, so this is, it's not this one, it's this one. These are both the same. Okay.
Now I'll do the second one.
Yeah, the ones I, these are both the same, right?
Yeah, okay.
This one is.
Okay.
Oh, no, this is it, okay. This is the home based contracting business one, right?
Right, but that's the second item.
That's the second one, okay, so that.
We want the one with the barn.
That would be reasonably.
So they're talking about that first.
I'm muted.
Don't say anything bad, Jerry, we can hear you.
All right, Tom.
It's not really showing you. I don't know where you are.
I'm hiding under the table.
So this one here is the special permit and site plan. Right? This is the first one, right? We get the right one here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Form A, there's the letter from Richard.
That's the one we wanna look at.
There's the plot plan. We got Jerry online.
I'm here.
All righty, you wanna walk us through what you wanna do, Jerry?
Uh, yes. Um, hi, everybody. Um, I would like to build a barn, a forty by eighty and it will house um about twenty five percent, well, maybe a little bit less, twenty percent of it. A twenty by thirty will have cold storage for apples and a little packing area. Um, there will be two bays for tractors and the spray equipment for the farm. On the last bay, I would put some, put my lawnmowers in there, my chainsaws, there I am. Um, and so is weed whackers, all my tools. And um, just to keep them under lock and key. Um, the house has to come down, the old house has to come down. I'm just waiting to get an asbestos survey and uh Richard has been um very kind and not pushing me along to get it done, so I actually would love to get the barn up for a tear the house down. We have permission from the historical society to go ahead and tear it down. Um, but primarily the barn is for three quarters, is for the farm equipment and farm purpose and twenty five percent would be for landscape equipment, lawnmowers, weed whackers, chainsaws, any other little pieces of equipment like that. And um, I have uh four trucks, one of them is a personal truck. Uh, we have six spaces for parking up at the house, whatever that matters, I don't know. Uh, Richard wanted to know where it would be parked. But there's plenty of room. Once we build a barn, I have a um, a trailer there for storage, the storage of apples right now, that will be gone, that will leave. So that'll open up a huge hole in the yard there for sto- um, for just to park the trucks. Um, and so they won't be up at the house, really. Um, and um, um, that's, that's, that's basically it.
Are you planning on paving around there?
Some, Tom.
Some, okay.
Some.
So your vehicles are gonna be parked on pavement or on dirt?
I would say on gravel first. It won't be dirt, it'll be gravel.
Okay.
I like to kinda do things piecemeal.
Yep.
Um, so, but yeah, I would eventually like to have some asphalt up there, so you know, when we're not tearing. you know, we're not tearing dirt all over the place. And do the place up nice, now that I live in town and everybody can see what's going on.
Probably too much.
Well, you know, they speed down sixty-two, so you know, that's okay.
That was my next question. Well, how you, were you gonna access sixty-two? You're gonna use the existing driveway or?
Yes, same.
Same.
All the same. Yep.
Anybody else want to jump in and ask a question or two? You let me do all the heavy lifting here.
Hi, Jerry. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes, you too, Caroline. How are you?
Good. So just Jay kind of whipped through all of the stuff, and this is my first experience with this kind of project. Why do you need, what do you need us to do?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know.
We have to give an opinion to the ZBA, right? That's our job. We get copied on the site plan review and special permit applications.
Correct.
Supposed to look at them and just send a note over to Lynn saying, we like it or we don't.
Right.
Got it.
We asked the questions, and then Jerry's prepared when he goes before the ZBA to answer the same questions.
Oh geez, so we have to channel ZBA.
Not, not entirely. We don't want to.
Well, I, I would note that the plan indicates that all, you know, offsets are going to be obeyed. Lot line offsets, I mean.
Sure.
Yep.
So do you find it dangerous trying to get in and out on sixty-two?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, it's definitely, takes a while longer.
Sure.
There's more traffic on the road. But there's there's good visibility both ways.
We can put in a stoplight for you if you'd like.
No, thanks. I don't really like those things, Jay. You know, they slow things down once we get going.
What this plan that's on the screen right now, what's the crosshatched area? I was trying to figure out what this is.
Um, I'm not sure. Maybe Sheila can help us with that. What is?
That is the total property that that is our total property. So if you, as you look with the see fifteen point two, that's the neighbor, that's oh, that's, I'm not describing it well. See the, our house, Bert Neva's house, one thirty-six, the old one thirty-six is right there on sixty-two, that little with the border, that little, oh. That's right on sixty-two then, and then where our new house is, is that longer
area.
Fore-sighted figure there. Then there's that long line that divides in the, towards the farm store.
Towards one forty-four.
That's our neighbors. So I think that that shaded area was the, the Ross Associates was kind of considering that whole area with the in terms of the wetlands and any kind of offset and setbacks and those things is what, is the way I read it when they originally sent us the plans. That if you look at, there's sixty-two, there's the neighbors across the street from us.
And this portion of your property, Jay?
Jay's, yep, Jay's field across the way and his, his little barn there. And across from our other neighbors. I'm assuming when I read this, this, this shaded area is, is all that we have to consider. Then the orchard, that's kind of all forest or trees. And then the orchard is, is all right, right behind us. And then between us and the neighbors is, is all of, all of that is all woodland. There's no water, there's no wetlands or anything else. So I don't know what exactly this, this is, there's nothing kind of that we're infringing on or hurting. It's all just woodland and into orchard. So I don't, I don't know if that, anyhow.
Is this, is this possibly the area that's excluded from the old Chedco Conservation Eastern?
Oh, oh, that, that might be, that might be it. Except, except that, that road there between us and the neighbors. That's, that's all access road into the orchard.
Right.
But yeah, yes, that's very possible. But I think Bert Neva owned that, that three acres is, is that kind of rhombus figure on our side of sixty-two.
Except the neighbor?
Mm-hmm. No, I thought that was but that was, well, maybe we're the, this is the three acres and that is the neighbor maybe, but that must be the neighbor then.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's, that's all fine. It doesn't preclude it from indicating that this is the area that's not subject to the restriction. And all your work is within the shaded area, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, no, it is. And then, yes, then the rest is orchard behind that.
Yep, yep. I, I think that's probably what it is.
That would make sense because, yeah, because I think that does extend across the road too.
It does, yes. Yeah, because it was originally carved out around the existing homes, houses that were owned by Chedco, yep.
Yeah. For what it's worth, the historical commission were awfully cute when they came to look around and, and they did ask, they said, when the house comes down, could we just have one last, like, F, like, can we come and, you know, whatever you, we might take a door frame or, like, go have at it. I think they'll be disappointed, but.
Less for you to cart away that.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll miss it, though. Do you know a lot of people think we live in that house? Oh, Jay, can you go back there? Nah. Thank you. So the building is going to be steel? Yes.
Uh, yes. I mean, I have not finalized a contractor. I did speak to another one yesterday, and he said that he builds barns out of wood, and he thinks that wood could be even cheaper now than steel. He said, well, just give me a price and take it from there. But right now, it looks like it's going to be a metal building.
Awfully loud in the rain.
What did you say?
Awfully loud in the rain, but you're going to be sleeping in the new house, not in the barn.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I, I hope so, Tom.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I think Jerry, maybe some nights you will be sleeping in the barn, but I hope it won't be raining.
Well, you'll attract all the lightning away from my place. That's good. Okay.
No, I don't have any I don't have any particular questions on it.
Do you care to make a motion to support this?
Yes, I would make a motion to, to support this application as consistent with the terms of the zoning bylaw and it is the activity is relevant to the home business.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seen nobody jumping up and down.
Yeah, I, well, I guess I'll wait until after the vote. I do just want to say one more thing, but go ahead.
Is it Jermaine to the vote?
No.
Okay. Is it going to disparage Jerry?
No.
We've already done that with him sleeping in the barn.
All righty, I'll ask you to vote to accept this proposal. Carol McDonald.
We.
Aye.
We're, we're, we're not, we're recommending to the ZBA, right?
Yeah, we're recommending to the ZBA to support this application.
Yeah.
On the basis that is consistent with zoning bylaw and the activity is associated with the home business.
Good. Now, when you said accept, I thought, well, we're not, but yeah, good.
No, if I said that, I misspoke, I meant.
I might have, I might have misinterpreted. So you're clear, Tim?
Yep.
Okay, and Caroline, you, your vote still remains the same?
Correct.
Okay, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. So we will send a little letter of support to the ZBA.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to thank you, Jerry, for all that you do for the town and for keeping a viable, active farm in our community.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Caroline.
Yeah. If you, if you, if you made that a vote, we could pass that on this board as well, yes.
Yeah, and, and happy to support this and help you guys. The house is beautiful. You've done a nice job and just wanted to thank you.
Ah, that's great, Caroline. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We love living in town. And we've settled in like as if we never lived anyplace else, and the kids love it. So it's all great. Appreciate it very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We got the other part of the application, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're not going anywhere.
Sorry. Darn it.
So, yes, and it's eight fifteen, so we can take it up. Can you flip over to that?
That's where we are. That's it right here.
Perfect. So this is the application for home-based landscaping business.
Well, yeah, it's kind of weird because it's section eleven here says, request for home-based contracting business, but twelve talks about building a barn, so. Still confusing.
There's dual application.
I think this one is about the home-based business special permit.
We understand the intent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, is there, I, I should, I wish I had looked up the home-based contracting bylaw. Is there a limit to how many pieces of equipment can be stored for, on the property for a home-based contracting business? Or size or feel like there's some sort of limitations?
So there's a limit on, on a number of commercial vehicles. I don't have it off the top of my head. I think it's one, and I think it's got to be under twenty-six thousand GVW. And then I think there's a limit on how many employee cars can park on the property. Again, I don't have the thing in front of me, so I don't know.
Tim, did you just jump up to grab it?
Yep. Yep, yep, yep. The number and size of vehicles stored or used on the property that are in addition to resident and employee private vehicles shall not exceed the number and size specified in section five forty-one. Table of home-based contracting business. The lot size is greater than is a lot bigger than a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, Jerry?
It's a little over three acres.
Three acres would be a hundred and twenty. So, okay, so it's eighty to a hundred and sixty two hundred feet of frontage. One registered vehicle, less than twenty-six thousand gross vehicle weight as registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, one trailer, less than twelve thousand pounds. And employees, two. So employee-wise, these are your employees wear multiple hats.
Uh, yes.
I mean, sometimes they're working on the farm.
Correct.
Sometimes they're doing this. So it's, it seems as though how, how many have you got on the road at any one time doing landscaping?
Uh, so in the summertime, I have two full-time guys and one part-time. And the, one of the full-time guys is fifty-fifty landscaping, farming.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, to me, you meet that requirement. I think that's the explanation you'd be given the, the ZBA. You know, you got one guy that's full-time, one guy that's fifty-fifty, and one guy that's part-time, and the equivalent is two.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
That sounds good.
Yep, I can, I can make that work.
Yep. And vehicle-wise, they're probably seeing duty on the farm, right?
So we have all the trucks are a commercial because they do bolt.
Right.
It's a lot easier to do farming work with a commercial truck as to do landscaping with a farm truck.
Yep.
If you get
Sure.
Yep.
Caught by the DOT.
Yeah, they don't like that.
With a farm plate, well, then it's, wow.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and we have two landscape trailers. They're both GVW of seven thousand. They are prime, they're for landscaping. They do not do any farm work with the landscape trailers.
And the rest of the heavy equipment does, works on both?
Yes. So we have a ball cap. We do farming with that. We have a small excavator that does eighty percent, ninety percent farm work. We will take it out in a little job here and there. And then that's, you know, the other heavy equipment is we have our four tractors. That's the kind that they have, the heavy equipment that never leaves the farm, really. We don't take them in jobs.
Farm vehicles.
But
Yeah.
I mean, you, it seems as though you could say that a lot of the equipment that you have for the landscaping business, you'd have for the farm business.
That, yes. That is the truth.
Yep, they're, so they'd be there for the farm regardless.
Right. Right, well, and what, from what you read, Tim, it sounds like the only thing that anybody might be able to point at is two trailers instead of one.
Yeah.
One's a hay wagon.
Yeah, we've I mean, the other way to look at this, to me too, is that you, you're, the lot may be less than a hundred and sixty thousand, but the, the, the farm and the, the land is greater than a hundred and sixty thousand, so you know, maybe there's an opportunity to say two registered vehicles and.
I, I was gonna say that, Tim. I mean, it's all contiguous, right?
Right.
Yes. Yeah, no, I think that makes perfect sense.
And that jumps you up to two trailers, two trucks, and three employees, so.
I think that our motion recommendation to the ZBA should include that.
The, the, the objective of this section is not to put somebody on a postage stamp and have an excessive amount of vehicles in a residential zone, but this is this is a use that's so contiguous and integrated to a farm operation that to, to say it's less than a hundred and sixty thousand doesn't seem practical. So that's, I mean, I think if we want to make a motion that says we, we we conceive of this whole project as overlapping and
Oh, yeah, that the bylaw should be applied, taking into account
Right.
the acreage of the contiguous farm as well as the lot.
Yep.
Fair enough.
I like that. I'll second that.
And then that, that takes away any inconsistency at all, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. May I slightly amend that motion to say that
slightly amend that motion to say that, uh, we find that it's consistent with the bylaw and that it should be construed as the, uh, you know, in entirety of the acreage of the farm and the lot, fair enough?
I like it, I'll second that.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Questions or comments, penetrating insights? Okay, if nothing, I will ask you to vote, Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
He's frozen.
I think he froze.
Yeah.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, oh, Tim's back.
He's back.
I keep
Tim, I didn't hear you vote.
Aye, heartily, aye.
Excellent, excellent, so motion carries unanimous to support the application for a home-based contracting business.
And again, to indicate that it should be construed with the entirety of the contiguous property and not just a lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Excellent.
All right.
Awesome.
Okay, you want to say anything else, nice, um, Carolyn or
I don't, you know, I don't want to like overdo it.
All right, everybody will begin to expect this sort of recommendation, you know, so.
All right. Thanks, Jerry.
Yes, thank you all very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Sheila, have a good night, all.
Thank you. Bye.
Be sure you turn off your Zoom, Jerry, we don't want to see the rest of your evening.
He's getting a hand.
All right.
All right. There's nobody else here for this.
Really?
Yeah. Unless I'm assuming the mic that's in the audience is Michael Sawyer. I guess I don't know. Hmm?
It would be a John Savello.
Yeah, nope.
No.
Are they on, uh, for eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
No, he's got three minutes to get here, yeah. We'll keep an eye.
Do we want to, um, review our town meeting warrant articles?
Sure.
Input? Jay, what do you mean by that? Did you get a input from somebody?
Well, a variety of people got up and spoke.
For our motions?
Yeah, didn't they?
Not for us.
People are racing to get out of there at that point.
What meeting were you at?
Yeah.
Whether we got any kind of feedback from the voters, maybe not.
I don't think we did, I didn't hear anything. I don't think
There are a couple of questions we had to answer, right?
We had a question in regard to the floodplain about accepting the the bylaw with a date on the map that was July. Um, but that's the only question I recall. On that one, and then
We're answering a few questions, but I don't remember what they were.
Well, that guy came over and talked to you privately.
Right, but some people some people came up and asked questions.
About the ADUs?
Yeah.
And no one spoke publicly.
Man.
Boy, are we getting that old?
Just like, was I that tired?
We were that tired.
So the person on the this Gates Pond Road one, it was Jose Guzman, Uzman, who I was communicating with.
Right, that name I think is on the application, is on the, oh, no, Jamie De Silva.
It says eight thirty.
Plan was prepared for. They haven't emailed, correct?
Well, it says eight thirty, next Tuesday, May eleventh. I always like to put something in to kind of
Confuse the applicant?
Believe that they showed up Sunday.
At the Zoom link. And you sent the PDF files, but he didn't, he never confirmed he was coming.
So the 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 only issues that they're dealing with in regard to the ZBA are the the they don't want to pave, they want to use the gravel, they 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 want the distance to the side yard allowed as a continuing use that was pre-existing. And they get parking in front of the building or something, is that it? I mean, they, because they got frontage on Central and Gates Pond, it's it's difficult for them to put their parking behind the lot, I mean, the front line of the house, right? I mean, I
Where you see the the front used to be facing Gates Pond Road, I don't know if it still is.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, it still is, that's where their access is, I I thought all three of their requests were reasonable, given the fact that it's, they're all pre-existing. And I just assume they not put impervious material on the parking lot anyway.
Agreed.
So.
So, but they're not trying to change the use of the building, is that true?
It's a showroom with a it did it did it, did it explain what kind of showroom it was? It's not a restaurant anymore.
I think it was tile, I saw somewhere mentioned tile.
And then they're gonna have
Okay, I didn't even see that.
Living quarters upstairs?
Yes, single family upstairs.
Where does it say any of this?
Um, let's just see if there's any.
The living quarter stuff is on another page, along with the the options to
I think I sent you, didn't I send you something in an email that was in addition to these drawings?
There was a bunch of information regarding uh, they they got a septic system issue that didn't pertain to us anyway.
Did I not read the notes thoroughly enough? Because I was trying to figure out what it was they're trying to do, so they want to you do commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor.
Oh, here it is.
Oh, look at that. So, wait, does it say the property use hasn't changed? Because I thought it was all living, I thought it was all converted into apartments.
This is the exterior of the property has not changed.
Oh, okay, right. Yeah, except they did that thing to the up upper porch, but showroom. I'm a slow reader.
Let me back up.
Please, just like two sentences, two lines, yeah. Got it. Okay. Regulation calls for ten-foot buffer buffer strip of protocol, let me edit. Okay, got it, okay, thank you. And I agree with Tim. I agree that the three things they're asking for are pre-existing and minimal.
And in the case of the, uh, the surface treatment, actually beneficial.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Where did you get an idea it was tile, Jay?
Somewhere in here. It was, it was obscure, I had, it wasn't. Let's keep going, see what else we got. There. I think it might have been in the handwritten part here. Out there.
I think it's your dreaming.
He just wants a tile tile showroom close.
Um, I'm happy to make a motion that we we, uh, send the Board of Appeals word that we're pleased with, um, the presentation and that none of the requests seem to us to be excessive because of the pre-existing uses and the benefit of having gravel rather than a paved surface.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing nobody jumping up and down, I'll ask you to vote on the motion to support this. Uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. So who's going to be, who's going to be the scribe to craft a little note to the ZBA?
Oh, I haven't trained, I haven't been trained on that.
But if you send the notes right away, I can craft the, uh, okay? Send the motions right away and I can, uh, I can craft the notes to the ZBA, okay?
Alrighty, thank you. Jade, is your chat GPT record the notes well enough for Thomas to be able to craft the letters?
Well, the problem is, it keeps changing stuff, like we'll vote for something and it won't agree, so it just changes it to no.
This is the problem with AI, which
Yeah.
as I always say, stands for artificial ignorance as well as artificial intelligence. And send me what you got, you know, I sure, I'll take a look at it and, uh, it would give me great delight to correct chat GPT while I'm doing the node, okay?
Real quick, GPT, chat GPT, um, story, I'm working on a project Hartford appellate court, they're doing some renovations down there, and we can't use any artificial intelligence in order to, um, record any meetings or do any note-taking or anything like that, it's part of the contract.
Wow, do you guys do that? Do you use AI for note-taking?
We don't right now, they're they're talking about using it to do the safety checks on the on the projects. So when AI go through and you, there's like a little questionnaire that you, you know, verbally say, and then they go through and ask questions based on your answers and your inputs for the safety stuff.
I had, I think I had to fill out something like that. Like every two weeks or some ridiculous amount for River Bridge for the apartments.
Oh, really?
You say that, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's a, it's it's a common issue, uh, we have a policy at Bram Brothers that, you know, I as an attorney can't use chat PPT or any AI in the course of my doing my duties as a lawyer. But every search engine that I have now has an overlay of AI, and so I have
Yeah.
So I, you know, I mean, I wouldn't trust it, you know, but it's there, you know, and, um, it, uh, yeah, it's, um, and frequently, it's it's not, frequently, it's not right, I mean, I've had, uh, I've had it indicate that, um, a rule required a certain thing and then gave a footnote. And when I checked the footnote, it wasn't a relevant footnote, and fortunately, I knew the law that was involved, and it was just wrong.
Yep.
And and that was just, I was just thinking, okay, but you know, they have this nice little summary at the top, let me click in the footnote, let me see if it's a shortcut. So I don't have to actually upload a link to the primary source, it was wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, but it was probably a lot cheaper, so maybe it was worth it.
It is cheaper to be wrong usually than right, at least in the short run.
All right, that's all, it's on the agenda.
May, may I just put something before the board, um, I would like to volunteer to be, um, one of the two representatives with Marlboro pursuant to the letter, and, uh, I haven't talked to Tim about this, but I would love to work with Tim on that. Um, and so I, you know, I I'd love to discuss that in the planning board, I think the two of us have worked together a long time, we worked together on the uh, the mall one point O. Uh, and I think we're well-equipped to, uh, to deal with it and could report to both the planning board and the selectmen, so I I wondered if, uh, we could discuss that and maybe, um, vote a recommendation. To to be, to be honest, I, you know, I I think to have one of us and to have a member of the selectman on the board is a concern for me because there's a huge learning curve. And there isn't the expertise, but, um, you know, I'd I'd like to see a motion recommending us and recommending that we, um, regularly and promptly update both the planning board and the selectmen as to the developments.
I would support that.
That's what I.
Want to make a motion, Carolyn?
Sure, I make a motion that, um, we recommend Tom, Thomas Andrew and Tim Wheeler to be the point people for any mall negotiations for the town.
May I add to that and uh, said, um, representatives, uh, promptly communicate with both the planning board and the Board of Selectmen as to the developments.
Promptly and frequently.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, well, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how frequent the developments are, but yes. Yeah.
Do I have to write selectmen on the
No.
We just elected Lisa Wasaki to the
Select Board.
Board.
Jay, can you second the motion?
Yeah, second.
Okay, um, so we have a motion in the second, and I don't see anybody jumping up and down for debate. So I'll ask you to vote, uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous, thank you, and thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
But I agree a hundred percent that that, you know, we should be leading the charge But I agree a hundred percent that, that, you know, we should be leading the charge because we have more knowledge base, and then to have you two, because you were there for the first one makes perfect sense.
Yeah. It was, uh, both of our fortieth, no, it was, it was my fortieth birthday. Um, and Tim somewhat more than that, but, uh, and I remember thinking, well, we got this settled and in our report, we said that we thought we could count on about thirty years
Right.
for the continuation of this use. And I remember thinking, well, that's great. It won't be my problem.
Little did you realize.
Yeah.
Little did I realize that.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was quite a day. And there was quite a series of meetings leading up to that. I mean, we, we met for hours and hours and hours.
Oh, man.
Well, I can imagine.
I remember days when we met in the Old Town Hall.
Yeah.
Until about noon. And, um, the developer actually paid for my admin at State Street where I worked at that point. It was, took great dictation and all of that to, uh, to be administrative support for us. And then I would drive into the office in State Street, meet her, and we would write stuff up until like ten o'clock at night. Yeah. I couldn't, I, I couldn't do that now, but I could then, yeah.
No, and that really helped a lot because we were, well, I mean, we were working from scratch. These other, you know, River Bridge and Highland Commons used that template to a large degree, you know, so, but it was created first round that time, you know, so we working with Tainer and Joe Bard and all those guys, that was.
Well, and, and, um, talk about blast from the past, um, I'm doing a, um, five oh one C three preservation trust for the meeting house. And, um, wanted, uh, wanted to be sure that it would be, uh, able to receive buddies from the town and so on. And, um, I reached out to Joel, who has a great deal of expertise in that area and said, uh, you know, can I, like, hire you hopefully for slightly discounted rate to, uh, to check this stuff? And he came back and he said, no, I'd be pleased to do it. I'd be pleased to do it gratis.
Yeah. He was a lot of fun to work with. We got lucky with that.
Yeah. All right.
Neat.
All right.
Can I make the, uh, the favorite motion of the night?
You may, if you wish.
Yes. I moved that, uh, we adjourn.
Second.
And a motion and a second, and it's non-debatable, so I will ask you to vote. JT.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye.